Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, February 4th, 2020 Business Meeting of the Olympia City Council. For the record, we have a quorum this evening. Everyone is present as well. We met earlier this evening for a study session, which was a briefing or receiving an update on the process of the Downtown Improvement District Proposal that's being brought forward to council. No decisions were made. At this time, I need a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. We have special recognition at the top of the order this evening. We have three very special recognitions this evening. So we'll start with item 2A, which is recognizing African American History Month. So the council is going to read the proclamation as a group here, and everyone should have their part marked. And then I will invite forward our staff contact and our presenter for the evening for this special recognition. Whereas during African American History Month, the many achievements and contributions made by African Americans to our economic, cultural, spiritual, and political development are celebrated and...
Whereas in 1976, Black History Month was formally adopted to honor and affirm the importance of blacks in American history, advance the cause of civil rights, and strengthen families, communities, and the nation, and...
Whereas in 1915, Dr. Carter G. Woodson, a noted black scholar and son of a former slave, founded the Association for the Study of African American Life and History, and initiated Negro History Week in 1926, and...
Whereas the first kidnapped Africans were brought to this country 400 years ago, marking the beginning of legalized slavery that lasted for 250 years until emancipation in 1863, and...
Whereas, as a result of their determination, hard work, and perseverance against all odds, African Americans have made valuable and lasting contributions to our community, the state, and the nation, achieving exceptional success in all aspects of society, including business, education, politics, science, the military, sports, and the arts, and...
Whereas the Association for the Study of African American Life and History's 2020 theme, African Americans and the Vote, emphasizes the significance of African American participation in the electoral process at all levels of society.
Now therefore, the city, the Olympia City Council does hereby proclaim February 2020 to be African American History Month in the City of Olympia and urges all citizens to recognize the continued need to battle racism and to build a society that is more just, peaceful, and prosperous for all, signed in the City of Olympia, Washington, this 4th day of February 2020.
Olympia City Council, Cheryl Selby, Mayor. I'll wrap that up. And, yes, definitely. Definitely applaud. And so it's my pleasure to introduce Mary Grace Godu, who's our Arts, Cultures, and Heritage Coordinator, and she will introduce Dr. Jackson.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council Members. I'm Mary Grace Godu, Historic Preservation Officer and Arts, Cultures, and Heritage Coordinator. And just quickly, in honor of Black History Month, the Olympia Heritage Commission and the Olympia Historical Society and Baglo House Museum are going to be co-sponsoring a special program, Blacks in Thurston County Historical Perspective, on February 22nd at 1:30 at the Olympia Center downtown. And the presenters for that will be Dr. Thelma Jackson and Ed Eckley. So I wanted to let you know about that event upcoming. Dr. Thelma Jackson is here tonight to speak briefly to this proclamation for African American History Month, and I'd like to introduce her, although many of you know her. Dr. Jackson has served for many years on numerous boards of community civic and service organizations at local and state levels, including task forces and advisory councils for five Washington State Governors. She has often served in leadership capacities, including as President of the Washington State School Directors Association, the President of the North Thurston School Board for 20 years, sorry, five-time President, member for 20 years, President of the Pacific Region of the National School Boards Association, Chair of the State Advisory Council on Vocational Education, Chairperson of the Washington State Legislative Ethics Board, Chair of the Commission on African American Affairs, and President of the Board of Trustees of the Evergreen State College. And this, I promise, is a summary. She's received numerous awards and recognitions for her educational and community service. She's currently the owner of Foresight Consultants. She and her husband Nat, of 54 years, are the proud parents of three children and grandparents to four granddaughters. They've resided in Washington for 52 years, and 49 of those have been here in the Olympia area. We are very fortunate to have her in our community and here with us this evening.
The honorable Mayor and members of the council. I'm delighted to be here this evening to accept this proclamation on behalf of African American citizens in this community. Thank you for those words that were included, and thank you for seeing fit as a city council to recognize this month. We are a changing community. We are a changing country. We are a growing community, growing in a great amount of diversity, of which many more African Americans are coming into the area. The mere fact that you recognize the importance of Black History Month and the contributions that were spoken of in the proclamation says a lot about the welcoming atmosphere that is present here as these numbers continue to grow. Your recognition of the ongoing contributions and successes says a lot about the educational process that we must expand and include so that all citizens understand and realize the roles that have been played by African Americans, not just in this nation, but also in this community as well. So we deeply appreciate your acknowledgement and your recognition, and I would just like to recognize my oldest granddaughter, who's here with me this evening, Adara Gandhi. And it's all about... It's all about the future generation. And so she represents that youthful future generation and what we want our community to look like as we all work together in our pursuit of liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Thank you, and I have a... I was telling Dr. Jackson that she needs to get her daughter to run for city council. All right. Anyone have some remarks from the dais? All right. I just have to add that I learn something more about you every time I hear you speak. That list of your accomplishments, it was just, I can't believe that you're in our community. We're so honored. So, thank you for being here tonight, and I can't let this go without mentioning that your husband Nat is also a jump rope champion. Yeah. He is amazing. All right. So, thank you. Next, we have item 2B, which is a proclamation recognizing immigrant and refugee advocacy day. This is something that's near and dear to this council's heart, and right after the 2016 election, our Mayor Pro Tem brought forward a sanctuary city proclamation and resolution, and we've been engaged in this whole struggle since that time. Tonight, we have a proclamation that we're going to read together as a council, and I will start with whereas the City of Olympia has prospered throughout its history from the extensive socioeconomic, political, and cultural contributions made by immigrants from every part of the globe, and...
Whereas we welcome all who enter this country to escape social, religious, political, or economic oppression, or in pursuit of its founding promise of a brighter future, and...
Whereas the City of Olympia is dedicated to the values of inclusivity, diversity, and hope, and...
Whereas the City of Olympia has committed to securing the freedom, rights, and dignity of all people who reside here, and...
Whereas, as a declared sanctuary city, the City of Olympia continues to demonstrate its abiding commitment to protecting all immigrants residing here, and...
Whereas we welcome the advocates for immigrants and refugees from throughout Washington who will be arriving into our city to celebrate Immigration or Immigrant and Refugee Advocacy Day Wednesday, February 5th, 2020, at the State Capitol, and...
Now therefore, be it resolved, the Olympia City Council does hereby proclaim the 5th day of February 2020 as Immigrant and Refugee Advocacy Day in the City of Olympia and urge all residents to join immigrant advocates to petition our elected state representatives to enact legislation to provide state and local government protections to all immigrants and their families in the state of Washington. Signed in the City of Olympia, Washington, this 21st day of January 2020, Olympia City Council, Cheryl Selby, Mayor.
All right. I'd like to invite, oh, we can clap, clap. At this time, I'd like to invite forward Bob Ziegler and Lynn Nelson with Strengthening Sanctuary Alliance, and their special guest, Montserrat Padilla.
Good evening, Mayor Selby and Olympia City Council. I'm Bob Ziegler. I live at 1102 A. Creekwood Court in Olympia, Washington, and I thank you for your solidarity that you've shown over these years with immigrants. It is very impressive. There's today, and also with, with, there's African American History Month, there is, today is the birthday of Rosa Parks, and so she's a woman who would not be cowered by fear and stood up for her rights and changed history in this country. And I and members of our community worked with a group here, a local group called Strengthening Sanctuary Alliance, and we've been honored to be able to stand with immigrants. And we have this great opportunity once a year in Immigrant Advocacy Day, when immigrants from around the state come here unafraid and stand up and speak for their rights, speak truth to power, like Rosa Parks did. And so it's a great honor. We're going to have a rally tomorrow at the State Capitol from 12:30 to 1:30. We invite everybody to come to that and stand with immigrants here and for rights, and so we get to a country. I believe that in our country, if we're going to save democracy, it'll be because of the immigrants here, willing to stand up and show their values and their courage, and for the people who will stand with them. And we're very fortunate to have with us from Weis and Washington, Immigrant Solidarity Network. There's a coordinator, the executive director.
Director.
Director. There's Montserrat Padilla, and she has a few words to say.
Good evening, everybody. It is an honor to be here today with all of you, Olympia City Council Members, and with everybody else. Happy Black History Month. It is an honor to be sharing space on a very important day, the birth of Rosa Parks, who many in our communities continues to ground us and gives us that strength and unapologetic courage to continue moving forward in this unprecedented times. My name is Montserrat Padilla. I am one of the directors of the Washington Immigrant Solidarity Network. We're a powerful statewide network with over 250 organizations in over 22 counties, working to build a defense line to protect immigrant and refugee communities in our own backyard and in our neighborhoods. Today, Immigration, Customs Enforcement, and Customs Border Patrol continues to persecute and terrorize our families from when they're trying to access the courts and the halls of justice to report their abusers or become witnesses when they've witnessed a crime, when they're trying to attempt to enter their workplace so that they can provide and make ends meet for their families. Today, we have an administration that has created policies that suffocate our communities to the very end, until there's no, no hope or future for many of us. And so today, as someone who is undocumented and afraid, transgender and ashamed, I'm really excited that the City Council of Olympia is declaring February 5th as Immigrant and Refugee Advocacy Day. It is this type of actions and statements that when the most hard moments and most dark moments of our lives is, it is this light of, this sense of hope and light that really inspires people like myself to, to no longer give up and to not give up that seat, you know, that many, many other people in our, in our previous history have had to give up. And so we're very excited and thankful that you all are announcing tomorrow as an immigrant and refugee advocacy day. Over 250 individuals from over 45 legislative districts will be joining us. This is an amazing, powerful statewide structure that today is organizing in 45 legislative districts. People in Washington State today care about their immigrant and refugee neighbors, and I'm really honored and thankful that Olympia also cares. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Any comments from the dais? I've got Councilmember Gilman.
Tomorrow on the legislative campus is the Immigrant and Refugee Advocacy Day, and at noon time, folks will gather on the Capitol steps, and I will be representing the council and bringing this proclamation and a statement about our sanctuary city to those 250 immigrants and advocates who are gathering to push this message. So I'm, I'm just really appreciative that we've, we've passed this and, and glad that we can keep our doors open for everybody.
Wonderful. Councilmember, partially followed by Mayor Pro Tem Bateman.
In 2017, when I decided to run for city council, one of the things that really struck me and made me very, very proud is what the council had done under the leadership of Mayor Pro Tem Bateman was to pass that we were a sanctuary city. I see myself as a current member as my job is to make sure we hold strong and that we hold to that value. This proclamation is incredibly important. To speak also a little bit to the Black History Month, there's a little-known fact, or one that oftentimes those of white persuasions like to forget, by 2035, we will be the minority. I heard a very moving moment on NPR this, this weekend that basically said, in the Black Month honoring the vote, both for the women and for the African Americans, and looking at our sanctuary city, it is a problem of the minorities. It is their problem, but it is the responsibility of the Caucasians in this country to move this forward. To add a little bit of economics, there's a well-known thing out of the Wharton School of Business. If you are diverse, and you have at least 25% of people of color in your business, you earn between 15 and 25% more than an equal business that is completely Caucasian. I honor what we have done. I want to move this forward, and I want to accept my responsibility as a council member to hold strong to our sanctuary city and our values, and to move forward and make sure this dais in the next 10 to 15 years is diverse.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Bateman.
Thank you, Mayor Selby. Thank you so much to the folks that came out tonight, and especially, I want to thank Montserrat Padilla, and then also Bob Ziegler for coming. Councilmember Gilman and I had the opportunity to meet with you all a couple weeks ago, and I just have to say that I've met with a lot of organizations and a lot of representatives of organizations, and the work that you're doing is phenomenal on so many different levels. You're working in a strategic way to help protect the individuals in our community that are being targeted, and I thank you for your coming here tonight and taking time out of your day to do that. I also want to thank Bob Ziegler, Lynn Nelson, Stephanie Powell, for all the work and others creating this coalition that is now Strengthening Sanctuary Alliance, which is going out to other communities and sharing what the City of Olympia has done to help them also become a sanctuary city, or if they don't have the ability to publicly declare themselves a sanctuary city, to change their policies to reflect the work that we've done. I have to say, I'm extremely proud and honored to represent a community that is Olympia that has shown such support. This council took immediate action in 2016, and by December had unanimously passed a sanctuary city resolution, and that was thanks to the leadership of this council and council members that have gone and are no longer here. It was also because of our community. I met with immigrant rights advocates to create that legislation. We met afterwards, and continually, Clark Gilman and I and others have met to ensure that it's being implemented as it was intended. That meeting that we had with advocates actually turned into it becoming an even better policy, and since then, we've evolved that to shape our jail policy and our long-term holds to ensure that we're not contracting with any counties that have contracts with ICE. We've gone on to partner to support a resolution for Keep Washington Working to help tell our state legislators that we value immigrants in the state of Washington. They contribute economically to our communities across the state. Added protections, including in that legislation, protecting folks from having ICE contract with counties across the state. And I know there's legislation currently being worked on that would help prevent the type of occurrence that we had here in our own community where ICE knocked at the door of a courthouse intimidating folks in our community. We want to prevent that from happening. We want people not to be afraid to go to a law enforcement or a court of justice. And what I, I'd just like to close by saying that all of this was made possible by community. None of these policies were created by one individual. It was an iterative process through years of work, not just by this council, but by all of the advocates that have come before. And Montserrat, you truly give hope and light to communities and individuals all across the state, so thank you for doing that work.
Well said. So, thank you. Item 2C is another special recognition this evening, and this one is relates a lot to what we just listened to during our study session about how special our downtown is. And we're going to proclaim it now very, very loudly about why I go downtown. There's a new marketing campaign, and it's my honor to introduce Max DeJarnet, who is our Parking Business Improvement Area Liaison with this, for the city, and he'll introduce a couple other members of the PBI to kick this off.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, my name is Max DeJarnet. I'm the PBI staff liaison. It's my honor to be here to introduce a project that I'm really excited about, and I'm sure that the members of the public will be as well. Last year, a, one of our longest-serving board members brought an initiative to, to the PBI, recognizing that there was a need for some, a, a marketing push. She also noted that there was some spent funds in the PBI's account, and so she really rallied to get those funds allocated. Oh, this is just a background. Yeah, it's okay. I can, I can simply, okay, all right. So, so at that point, the council allocated the funds, and we developed a path forward, and determined the best path forward was actually working with the ODA to do a collaborative marketing campaign. And really, I think the, it will show by the end of this presentation that it was an excellent product, and I think the synergy of the two groups working together really brought dividends. So I'd like to introduce the board chair, Danielle Ruse, and she can talk about the players involved.
Hello again, council. I just wanted to take a few seconds to recognize our partners in this project. First off, I'd like to recognize Meg Martin, who's in attendance tonight with her parents. Hi, Meg. Meg started the Why I Go Downtown hashtag last year in response to some negativity surrounding our downtown. She's a true advocate for downtown and loves our city and fights for our most vulnerable every day. We all know that. We're all familiar with Meg, but for those who aren't, thanks for coming tonight, Meg. And also our partners at the ODA, Natasha Ashenhurst, who runs Mosaic Marketing and made this possible with partnership with Flow and State, and Todd Cuts at the ODA, who came to all of our planning meetings. I'd like to introduce Janice Dean to come and take the microphone from me and talk about this project. Thanks, Janice.
My name's Janice Dean. I own and manage the Pop and J in downtown Olympia. I began my business in 1977, and have had a store downtown since 1986. I've served on the board of the ODA for 14 years and on the PBI for 15 years. I've seen many changes in downtown over the years. While new construction ensures that our community is growing, our business climate in the past few years has been less than optimal. Small business people are hardworking and proud. As a PBI board member, I feel the duty bound to do my best to help improve our business prospects. It's up to us as individuals collectively and as a board to optimize the assets of our self-taxing district. Our investment in Why I Go Downtown marketing campaign is a step in the right direction. I'm confident with the guidance of Mosaic Marketing. That company will have a campaign that we can grow with. The people-to-people aspect of the campaign illustrates in video form, lost my place, in video form testimonials from people who are already committed, downtown users. There are people who love downtown. There are people who shop in my business, everyone else's business. Their, their hub is downtown. It's a wonderful thing. The very honest approach that these people have, have, have taken to highlight the assets of our community will surely cite, will surely strike a positive note. I urge city council to ask the communications department to join in this campaign and support the revitalization of the downtown core. Downtown has often been called the heart of our community, and let's restore its vibrancy. Let's inspire all Olympians to feel proud of our downtown. And I really think this marketing campaign will be inspirational to many. Thank you very much for your consideration.
And so I thought we'd share one or two videos. They're very brief. Natasha, do you recall how to get to the...
I've gone to many of the same shops for many years, but I love finding new ones, and I also often see people I know, which is when you've lived in town for a long time, that's, it's very common. And the shopkeepers, I get to know them personally, which is just a wonderful touch. Downtown Olympia to me is very family-oriented, a friendly place. There's a lot of variety. It appeals to all ages. My grandchildren come down to their theater programs. We buy our books down here, our olive oil, our clothes. There's just a lot going on down here. I'd encourage anybody to come down here and spend time. I am Jean Canes, and this is why I go downtown.
I think the, the biggest reason for me is the community. It's, it's running into people that you know or don't know, and then like you get to meet new friends almost every single time you come down here. I come downtown for the beauty. I mean, like, look around, it's, it's breathtaking, you know, and it's, it's a great culture down here, I think, and it, it keeps me coming back. You love what you do, you never work another day in your life, you know, and there's a lot of that down here. We have the opportunity to do what we love and to share that with our community, and I think that's really special. That's a good atmosphere to have. My name's Lindsay Malinelli, and this is why I go downtown.
And that's all we have.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. What would be, I think, helpful would be, how can we share these, how can the community watch these and share these on our social media, and how, where do we find these?
Thank you. So the campaign's already purchased the domain for whyidowntown.com, so it's a real easy way to...
Meg, you didn't buy that already? Just kidding. I'm joking.
You bought it for...
Yeah. I'm joking. You bought it for... Yeah. Yeah. So, WhyIGoDowntown.com?
That's correct.
All right.
And then you can view the videos from that site.
Okay. Are they linked as well on the ODA website and Instagram? I mean, do we have...
We're going and out online.
Oh. Could you repeat that for the microphone so we know? I mean, I...
Yeah, so each video's going to be featured, one per month for, I think, a six-month campaign? Five-month campaign? And then there will also be print advertising associated with it as well.
Excellent. Excellent. Well, thank you so much. Any comments from the dais? Councilmember Parshley?
I know that at the PBIA meeting, we talked about sharing with Olympia and beyond in our own Facebook and website. Is that being arranged? Yes, okay. Good. Very good, because that's a way to get it out and echo it out, because Olympia and beyond, as well as our own Facebook and website, does get a lot of views.
Excellent. Councilmember Cooper?
Thank you, Mayor Selby. Great work. It looks really sharp, and those videos are fun. And thank you, Meg, for the gift to our community.
Excellent. And Thurston Talk, another one. Maybe they can push it out, too. All right. Councilmember Madron?
So, I remember when that hashtag campaign started. Thanks again for that, Meg. And as I kept going downtown to find reasons to use that hashtag on a daily basis. So, for me personally, it was very effective. So, I'm excited to see what comes of this.
Thank you. All right. Look forward to seeing more. All right. So, now we're on to the portion of our agenda, which is our opportunity for the community to give comment to us. And we have quite a few people signed up, and I went back and forth in my mayor brain as we were listening to the special recognition. And sometimes we do ask people to go down to two minutes, but I think, looking at this list, I think there's enough people that know enough about public comment that they can keep their comments short. But we will do the three-minute countdown clock still, but I'm going to ask you if somebody's already spoken to something you are referencing, that maybe you could edit your comments. So we can get through as many people as we can in the first 30 minutes. We have a brief consent agenda to adopt later on after the first 30 minutes. So, if you didn't get called in the first section of public comment, stick around. We've got, like I said, a brief consent calendar to get through, and then I'll get back to this list as well. There's several people that we've heard from frequently in the last month. So, I'm calling on people out of orders, people that we haven't heard from, and then we'll get to the people that we've heard from as that plays out. So, if you've signed up, I'm assuming you've also read our guidelines around public comment. Like I said, three minutes. We ask that speakers do not promote or oppose a candidate for public office or a ballot measure. We do have ballots out there right now for a bunch of school levies, so we can't speak to that or any other public hearings that we are going to be holding in the next 45 days. So, with that, we'll get through this. I can call three names at a time. You can stage yourselves there, and that saves time getting to the podium as well. I will start with Ellen Silverman, followed by Lee Reimer, and then followed by Sam Merrill.
Thank you, Mayor, and city council members. I am really excited to be here tonight. I am excited about what I'm following up. We all want a really vibrant community. We want one that's diverse and safe and affordable and a pleasure to work in and play in and go downtown in. I see we're emphasizing that. I am incredibly concerned about the three provisions in Engross Second Substitute House Bill 1923. However, before discussing each of the provisions, it's imperative that any large-scale changes to zoning have comprehensive and extensive notification to all property owners and anyone who's paying for utilities. As it stands, it feels like the city's making unilateral decisions about what and where development should be happening before Olympia residents even know about what's happening. Very few people are aware of the war being waged on their neighborhoods and around their homes. The city needs to slow down and notify everyone who's impacted. If the city can notify everyone about glass recycling, or let's go downtown, I'm sure we can come up with a great way of notifying everybody about these massive changes, proposed zoning changes. It's interesting to note that there's no requirement for anyone to implement or adopt this house bill. Please reconsider other options. Maybe there's opportunity zones in Olympia, which some of the options really do make sense. Right now, as a whole cloth approach, one-size-fits-all is bad for communities, neighborhoods, and property owners. It's also a mistake of epic proportions to implement this bill. There's lots of smart choices we already have. We don't want to pander to developers who can pencil out the costs and shove things into neighborhoods. We want to think about our infrastructure, our roads, our bad sidewalks, housing costs, emergency services, and our overwhelmed lot system. We need to think about polluted runoff into our very delicate Puget Sound. We want to think about this very carefully. We already have provisions for ADUs and duplexes. Some of the things that I'm really concerned about around this, you know, a house and an ADU on a quarter, on a 14th side, one fourteenth of an acre in a city-family zoning district, that doesn't make very good sense. Allowing a house and an attached ADU and another attached ADU on a larger than one-tenth of an acre in a single-family zoning, it doesn't make sense. So, please, please go slow. We all want a vibrant community. We want a place that we can call our home. We want to be attached to our beautiful downtown, and we want to have places that are affordable, that attract a diverse population. And we know that in other places where these things have been adopted, housing costs rise, taxes rise, and our diverse populations cannot afford to live in these communities. So, please don't be misled by this new marketing campaign. It's bad policy.
Thank you. Lee Reiner, followed by Sam Merrill, followed by Cody Cook.
Thank you so much for taking public comment tonight. I think many of us are here because we love Olympia with all our hearts. Many of us in this room have lived in Olympia for 35 years or more, and we have been diligently working for our communities for that time. And that's why we want to participate in this process. I want to say that I fully support the last speaker, what she said. I believe that the city of Olympia planning, city of Olympia council members are shoving this whole issue of more and more housing down the throats of the neighbors, and many of us are very concerned. The reason I'm here tonight is because of one Green Cove Park development. As you're perhaps aware, Green Cove Park development is 181 housing proposal on the Cooper Point Road Northwest, which is near 20th Street, which is part of Elliott Street. Many of us have our houses there for the last over 30 years, and we are very familiar with this. This site in particularly that I'm speaking of is the old Sundberg Mine Site. As you perhaps are aware, there's been tremendous documentation that this old Sundberg Mine Site has been contaminated with cryosated logs from the Port of Olympia site. And so, we are asking the planning department not to allow the developer, Jerry Men, to go forward with his proposal, 181 houses on the Cooper Point Road site. It seems like Jerry Mahon has now said that he refuses the city's request, the planning department's request, to provide more information regarding this contamination. We presume that Jerry Mahon feels like he runs the city of Olympia and not we, the neighbors, that have been here for 30 and 40 years, because Jerry Mahon knows that perhaps the city council cares more about more and more housing, and they care less and less about the neighborhoods. Yes, we understand the need for housing, but this mine site is contaminated. This mine site has a direct outlet to Bud Inlet. This mine site will contaminate future streams around the area. And the Green Cove Basin is special. It's a critical area. So, I ask you to not let this proposed development to go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. I've got Sam Merrill, followed by Cody Cook, followed by Linda Ann Moniz.
Thank you, Mayor Selby, and members of the council. I'm Sam Merrill, and representing the Thurston Climate Action Team and approximately 1,000 members who are on our list. I'm also chair of the Conservation Committee of the Black Tails Audubon Society. And I thank you for formulating an admirable climate mitigation strategy and for being part of a county-wide effort, working together to form the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan. We can all do our individual parts to address climate change, but it's essential that we work together to make joint decisions as Olympia, Lacey, Tom Water, and the county are doing. But now is the time to work out the details of how to implement this mitigation plan. And I speak not just for myself, but for my two children, my four grandchildren, their eventual descendants, and all young people who will live through the effects, good or bad, of what we older folks do to reduce carbon in the next few years. We in our communities are at the ground zero of implementing together the steps that will replace with sustainable alternatives the greenhouse gases that we're all emitting. And rather than slowing the economy, developing and implementing sustainable alternatives will provide new jobs and career opportunities, enhancing the economy, in contrast to continuing business as usual with ever greater severe storms, drought, sea level rise, and the potential of suffering here in Washington State, what we're now seeing in Australia. To address climate change, we need fundamental changes in our municipal, county, state, and national lifestyles, as I'm sure you know. Implementing the Thurston County Mitigation Plan is a significant step in that direction, one that can be a beacon to other cities and counties in our region. So, we with the Thurston Climate Action Team support your efforts to implement the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Cody Cook, followed by Linda Ann Moniz, followed by Robert Clark.
Hello. Good evening. Thank you, Madam Mayor and the members of the city council for having me and hearing me. My name is Cody Cook. I'm a resident of Olympia, a member of Thurston Climate Action Team and Citizens Climate Lobby. And I'm 19 years old. I have decades of life to look forward to. I cannot, however, say that I look forward to shrouds of ash in the sky every summer, the degradation of our beautiful forests and beaches, the spiraling feeling of dread and instability that will come with the climate crisis every year persists. This is a problem that I face, every resident of Olympia faces, and all my fellow youth here in the city. Therefore, it is my pleasure to be able to speak to a city council and a mayor, which have the will to push for a mitigation plan, along with the other cities in this area. I am glad to see that this city is taking up the torch and the duty of fighting the climate crisis when the leaders of our national administration dismiss and deny the urgency of the issue. I hope that the city of Olympia will continue upholding this duty. So, not only funding this plan, but upon release by TRPC, adopting it in whole, without modification, to be enacted as quickly as humanly possible. Thank you for having me, and I wish you the best of strength, resolve, and any luck that can help in this process.
Thank you. Linda Ann Moniz, followed by Robert Clark, followed by John Gilstrom.
Thank you, Mayor Selby, council members. First, I wanted to thank the First Christian Church Pastor Amy for reaching out to the eleven campers from the Fourth Avenue Bridge. They felt that their sobriety would be in danger if they were to reside at the mitigation site, so thank you. My hope is that everyone transitions well there and for their future. I wish them the best of luck. Now, what has been left behind at the Fourth Avenue Bridge is awful. The destruction is worse than anyone could even imagine or that we wanted, even after just housing Tigundo on December 21st, 2019, was claiming a cleanup of that property. It leaves everyone wondering what else is out there. The destruction from chronically homeless illegal camps is overwhelming, and it must end. Thank you. I love Olympia.
Thank you. Robert Clark, followed by John Gilstrom, followed by Kathy File. Oh, sorry. No Robert Clark? All right. We'll move on to Kathy File. I'm sorry, John. I'm out of my... John Gilstrom.
I'll try to make this as brief as I can and stay within time. Thank you for letting me talk about this. I want to talk about your implementation of House Bill 1923. I understand there are good reasons to promote infill, and there are good intentions behind trying to produce a lot more housing. However, I am very concerned about the way in which this is being implemented, and I will summarize all of my concerns in about two sentences here. Basically, what this does is try to cram too many duplexes, threeplexes, apartments, townhouses, et cetera, into too small a lots and too small a neighborhoods. I live in the Bigelow neighborhood. It was built in the 20s and 30s. We all live in small houses. Understand that that neighborhood already has apartments, townhouses, and duplexes. So, the current law is already accommodating that. What I don't want is to see more of it crammed into the little bit of remaining space that is there. Okay? My house was built in 1925... Excuse me, 1929. I have a single-car garage that my little Honda barely fits in. All of my neighbors have to park cars on the street. My house is 900 square feet. My wife and I live there. We have two bedrooms, a bathroom, a kitchen, and a living room, perfect size. Would be a great house for a starting family, a single person, an older couple trying to downsize. Those kinds of houses are valuable. And also note, they are below the average price of houses in Olympia. So, they're the kinds of houses we want to preserve so that people can afford to buy a house. Now, you're going to propose an ADU of 1,000 square feet. That's bigger than my house and no parking. I don't want to have to fight for a parking space in front of my house. I don't want my neighbors to have to fight for a parking space in front of their house. What I want to see is an adequate public involvement program. I used to run public involvement programs. There's a lot you could do. I'm sorry. I don't mean to be offensive, but this really feels like this is being trying to ram down our throats. Okay? It is going to have a lot of negative unintended consequences. I really want the commission to consider those things before it makes a decision. Holding two public meetings that people don't know about and don't even know what the issue's about is not adequate public involvement. Engage with us. Find collaborative solutions that maybe we were able to find everybody's... Okay. Follow the money. Who benefits from this? The developers, the real estate people, the investors. The neighborhoods don't benefit from this. So, single-family neighborhood homes are not the enemy to be destroyed. They are to be preserved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathy File, followed by... I have Bob Ziegler? Nope. Okay. Same with Montserrat? Okay, got it. While Kathy is setting up, I've got Becky Liebman.
Okay. Sit direction. I'll let me just sit here. All right. My name is Kathy File, and I live in the Indian Creek area. That's between the illegal camps that are on Wheeler and the tiny homes that are on Boulevard. So, we have quite a bit of traffic that moves up and down that street between those two camps and other camps. I spoke a year ago. It was a year ago that I first came, thinking I was giving you news that not only were there people in the camps that were downtown, but they were actually out in the watershed, in the woods, raining, wet. I was... I wouldn't... I was, I wouldn't let an animal stay out there, a dog, a man, I'd be out looking for it. If there was someone that got from a senior center, we'd form a posse to go out and find that person and bring them in from this weather, because trying to spend one night out there in that kind of environment is something that I personally, I just can't imagine that we can as a community allow that to happen. The city has done a great job focusing on the tiny house program, the mitigated sites, the programs that are happening right downtown, but the biggest part of what is completely being ignored are that we are, as a community, allowing human beings to live in a horrible environment, digging pits in the ground and trying to put plastic down so that they can stay warm and dry on these nights, 32 degrees out there. We can't have a plan that says, when we find housing for these people, we'll get them out of those places. We have to have a plan that says, we have an emergency happening in our community, and those people who are out in those little tents and out in the community, I don't know, somehow they think that our group is like against them because we want to get them out of the woods. Yes, I want to get them out of the woods because something is inherently wrong, incorrect, if that number of people choose on purpose because they want to live out there in that manner. It's really, it's like, I'm a really liberal person, and, boy, this has just thrown me in to the deep end of the pool with people who I never thought I would, you know, be around politically, because it's like, they're going, yeah, and we don't like those Democrats. I'm going, what are you talking about? This is not about being liberal or conservative. This is about caring about our community and these people, whether we want to think they're from someplace else or not. We now have given them free bus service so that they can go farther out into the woods and then use the buses to come in.
Thank you.
We're having a thing on Friday night that's bringing people through.
You know, your time has run out, and so I'm going to have to cut you off. I'm so sorry. You can hand that over to Kelly. We'll take that and pass that out to us.
Thank you. I've got Becky Liebman, followed by Callie Wilson, followed by Alex Frelick.
Good evening, Mayor Selby, and honorable members of the Olympia City Council. My name is Becky Liebman, and I've lived in the area since 1971. I'm here tonight representing Thurston County Chapter of Fair Vote Washington. We are a nonpartisan group advocating for the use of ranked choice voting, also known as RCV, which is a popular voting system currently used in communities around the U.S. We're part of a statewide fair vote movement with active chapters in eight counties. We are also part of a national movement. Over 4 million voters nationwide are currently using it. This will soon triple because New York City just last November voted to adopt it by 73%. 24 state legislatures are currently exploring the adoption of ranked choice voting, including Washington State with its local options bill, allowing communities to use ranked choice voting if they so choose. We understand that the window for your recommendations on state legislation may be closed. Thus, my testimony tonight is simply to educate, briefly addressing two questions. First, what is ranked choice voting, and how might it strengthen our local elections? To the first, it's surprisingly simple. Voters get to rank multiple candidates in order of preference. If a candidate receives over half of the votes in the first round of counting, they win, just like any election. But if no one gets over 50% of the vote, the candidate with the fewest votes gets eliminated, and if that happened to be my first choice, now when the votes are recounted, it will be my second choice that is counted. This process continues until a candidate wins a majority of the votes. So why will it strengthen our local elections here in Olympia? First of all, ranked choice voting minimizes negative campaigning, and therefore campaigns will be more about solving problems and less about attacking other candidates. Secondly, it addresses a voter's spoiler dilemma, wherein two candidates with similar views split the vote and inadvertently help elect the candidate they like least. Thirdly, candidates will have an incentive to find common ground with one another because all candidates seek and benefit from a voter's second or third choice. Voters can honestly vote their true values, and ranked choice voting ensures candidates will win with the broadest possible support. I will leave your staff with more information for this exciting way to bring more choices, more voices, and less negativity. And again, thank you for what you do and your beautiful proclamations tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Got Callie Wilson, followed by Alex Frelick.
I'm Callie Wilson. I live at 3043 Central Street in southeast Olympia, and my primary purpose tonight was to be here for the proclamation in favor of immigrants. I'm looking forward to my social security being funded by lots of working people. So, I also wanted to say I'm very much in favor of infilling. I would like it on my street, a street of single-family homes built in the 50s for brewery workers. I live there, and as to the gentleman asked, well, who would benefit? I would benefit having an ADU so that when I'm feeble, I can live in my ADU and have other people live with me who will help care for me. I'm one of the people who will benefit if we have infilling. Who else would benefit? If you would change things a little bit so that I could build an ADU in the garage, I'm right next to Olympia High School, I'm right next to the middle school, there's got to be a teacher out there who's got a one-year contract, who needs to live there while they're waiting to find out if they're going to live there longer, and that's who I would hope to rent to. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Alex Frelick, followed by, sorry, Cindy Hahn.
All right, thank you. I am a neighbor of the proposed Green Cove development. I've lived at this place for about seven years now. This project has, as most of you probably know, gone through many cycles of being brought forth to the city, then being delayed and brought forth again, and being delayed for various reasons. I'm not going to try and tell you more about the information, the statistics, the science, because I feel like there's been a lot of people who have come before you in the last weeks, months, however long, who have brought that information forward before. I'm more here to make an appeal, a personal, more personal appeal. There's been a lot of talk tonight about development, like all the different kinds of development, all the different aspects of development that Olympia could be pursuing or could not be pursuing, and I just have to say that this project specifically is not the kind of development that anyone who lives near this, in this area, Cooper Point, Green Cove area, wants to see at all. And furthermore, it's my opinion that this is not the kind of development that the City of Olympia should be pursuing at all because of all of the points that have been made previously about the sensitive nature of the land, the impacts, the lasting, like, legacy of pollution in the sound, and furthermore, this is not the kind of development that's going to help our housing problem, help our housing crisis. Obviously, these houses, these 181 houses that are proposed, are not by any means low-income or even close, and so this development is bad for the land, and it certainly is not going to do anything to help the crisis of housing that we have in this area. I have a little bit here from Esther and Jerry, who unfortunately had to leave early, but, "The city must complete thorough unbiased testing for all wood treatment wastes and other toxins from groundwater soil, sediments, and water flowing from the Sunberg mine site. Testing must be done onsite and downstream from the site at the wettest time of the year as per best available science. All non-native materials need to be removed as required by Department of National Resources. The city must follow all state and federal laws, including the Clean Water Act and the Dangerous Species Act."
Thank you. We have time for one more speaker in our first portion, and that is, I lost my spot, Cindy Hahn.
Good evening. I'm Cindy Hahn. Thank you for your time. I'm just here again on the continued support for the development of ordinance that will not allow the sales of puppies and kitties for profit in pet stores. We have pet supply stores already that work in partnership with 5013C Rescues and our local animal shelter, and I think that that's something that our community already embraces. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. You were so fast, I have time for one more. So, I'll call forward Kayla Kerr.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. My name is Kayla Kerr. My husband and I own Puppy World here in Olympia. It's come to our attention that you've been recently been confronted by organizations that presented to you some false accusations regarding how we run our business and our practices. Puppy World provides a safe space for people in Olympia to learn about different breeds of dogs and find which puppy fits their lifestyle best. We are a convenient and safe place to simplify the purchase of your pet, and we do the research for our customers. Sorry, you guys got me nervous. We get our puppies from licensed breeders that we personally handpick and visit frequently to ensure our high standards are met. Many believe these breeders have little to no oversight and follow bare-bones minimum requirements to get by. I was going to provide you guys flash drives with some footage from our breeders, but I just learned that I have to print it out previously, so I have provided you guys an email. I can email those over as well. All the footage that I send you was taken by myself personally, my husband personally, so you guys can see firsthand where we get our puppies from. They are, these kennels are nicer, cleaner, and have more space than many vet clinics, boarding facilities, or daycares that you guys have ever seen. You'd think differently of USDA breeders if you saw the $200,000 kennels that are spotless, the happy parent dogs, and if you were present for the OFA health clinics like my husband and I are. Nine times out of 10, when you come onto a breeder's property unannounced, the kids are in the kennel in the yards playing with all of the parent dogs. There's fresh food and water 24/7, and baby monitors to watch the new litter of pups. In fact, these breeders treat their dogs better and give them more quality one-on-one time than most families do with their pets at home. We choose only to work with breeders who clearly have a passion for what they do and are not just in it for the money. They all must show interest in improving their breeding standards and program, even if they don't believe that there is a way to improve. If you're not familiar with OFA health clinics, our breeders participate in, it is Orthopedic Foundation for Animals. It's a nationwide third-party organization that participates in health testing. Basically, our breeder's veterinarian does exams, they will take x-rays, they will send it off to OFA for an evaluation, and then the parent dogs receive a certificate of health, depending on how their condition is graded, good, fair, poor, excellent. Using high-quality breeders allows us to offer multiple health guarantees, you know, so if you take home a puppy from us and say it gets a puppy cold or gets sick, we actually cover the vet bills for you. We hope you'll take the time to visit our store and see why it's important for people in Olympia to have a safe place to purchase a puppy so that they can stay clear of things like Craigslist, online scams, and purchasing a puppy on the side of the road. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, I think we will hold responses until after we finish with all the public comment for the evening, so at this point, I need a motion to approve tonight's consent calendar. So moved. Any questions, comments, or polls?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to poll 4G and 4H for separate action.
4G and 4H, separate action. Any others? All right, and I didn't make my notes on which, it's the, I just want to make a comment regarding the, where did it go? Sorry. 4E, thank you, which is the approval to apply for a grant with Washington Association of Sheriffs and Police Chiefs for enhancement of our Familiar Faces Program. I'm not going to ask for separate action, but I do just want to highlight the amount of work that went into this report. I hope you all had a chance to read it. It's like a case study in why the innovation that we're exhibiting around restorative justice and outreach to our street community is so important and so valuable, and is making a difference in so many people's lives. I wanted to shout out thanks to Shandra Brady, who wrote this staff report for us. She's a support administrator in the Police Department. I hope we win the grant. If I had any say in it, we would, but anyhow, it's just full of uplifting stories about what we're doing with the public safety dollars that our community has already allocated. Anyhow, just wanted to highlight that. Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Selby. I have just a comment on item 4I. Can I go ahead with it?
You bet.
Okay. I just wanted to let people know that the Thurston County Commission will be taking up the consideration of whether they will look at a comprehensive plan amendment pertaining to Rocky Prairie zoning, and so should this motion be successful, we will be taking a position as a city against that comp plan amendment being on the docket, and we hope that our citizens will reach out to Thurston County this week. That's very, very timely.
Thank you for that. All right, so we will only be voting, we'll be voting on the consent calendar minus item 4G and 4H. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those consent calendar items pass. Councilmember Rollins, we'd like to speak to items 4G and 4H.
Same as previous multifamily tax exemptions, I am voting no because I would like our policy to move towards incentivizing affordable housing, not housing, not market rate housing.
All right, thank you for that. So for clarification, item 4G is approval of a resolution authorizing multifamily housing tax agreement between the City of Olympia and the Easterly LLC, and then item 4H is the same, except it's between the City of Olympia and Westman Mill. So, anyone else, Councilmember Madron?
And I'll just say, as I said in the last meeting, that it is on the work plan for the Land Use Committee to look into that policy, so that is on our agenda for this year.
Thank you for that. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
All right, for the record, Councilmember Rollins, what do you know? All right. Well, that was super quick, so we're right back to public comment because we don't have any other business on our agenda this evening, which is highly unusual. So, I would like to reconvene with, next person on us here is Justin Kerr. Kerr? Kerr? I've heard her pronounced both ways, Justin Kerr, followed by Colleen Bradford, followed by Bob Jacobs.
Hello, I'm Justin Kerr from Puppy Land and Puppy World in Olympia and Puyallup. You've all heard the rumors and the misleading information about what we do and how we do it. Unfortunately, not a lot of people have been on our side of the pet industry. They are on the receiving end of those who are doing it bad, so really, I just kind of wanted to tell you, she touched on most of it, but we just want to show you guys that we can do it right, that this can be done the right way, and we have been doing it the right way. We have health guarantees in place, we put the effort in to make sure that our breeders are good breeders and are actually treating, treating their animals the right way. Everybody, obviously, dislikes abuse, so, so do we. We're just here to provide happy, healthy, responsibly bred puppies to our community, and that's what we've been doing so far for the last about a year and a half. The conditions of, the conditions of our breeders, that our breeders provide, shows in the health of our puppies. It would reflect on the puppies that we have, that if those parents were in these horrible conditions that they show. Really, we just, I mean, the state's already kind of had their hearing audit bill similar to this on a state level, and they've actually said that they, they don't want to ban, they don't want to ban this. They would rather regulate it and make sure that we are doing it right, so that you guys can be confident that we're not doing anything harmful to your community, that they would rather regulate, whether that's health guarantees or sourcing or anything, that we'd be, we're happy to do that because we are, we're confident in what we're doing, that we're able to provide those health guarantees. I mean, at the end of the day, if we were putting out these sick, healthy puppies, our business wouldn't be expanding or even still exist anymore, and so far, we're on our third store, so this, obviously, obviously, we're doing something right and not paying out a mass amount of vet bills, so that's really the bulk of what I have right there, and she kind of touched on most of it, and we sent you quite a bit of information on how we, how we operate to make sure that we are doing everything the right way. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I've got, sorry, reordered here a little bit. Six, Colleen Bradford, followed by Bob Jacobs, followed by Michelle. Six, Colleen Bradford, followed by Bob Jacobs, followed by Michelle, and I can't read the last name. Oh, all right, so we'll move right to Bob Jacobs.
Good evening. For the record, I'm Bob Jacobs, and I live at 720 Governor Stevens in Olympia. I'm here to speak about the Housing Options Code Amendment exercise that began recently. This exercise could, as you know, result in allowing duplexes, triplexes, or courtyard apartments on every parcel of land in Olympia where single-family residences are allowed. That means it could affect all 13,000 parcels where single-family houses now exist, plus undeveloped parcels zoned for single-family houses. In addition, major changes in accessory dwelling unit regulations could result from this exercise. The Public Participation Plan for this exercise was released recently. It includes public meetings, comment forums, a webpage, and planning commission consideration. There's a glaring omission in this plan, and that is public notification. I'm here to suggest that you correct that omission. I suggest the city notify all affected property owners, owners of the 13,000 current houses plus undeveloped areas for housing. Why? First, it's the right thing to do. People need to know what's being considered so they can decide whether to participate. Public meetings that start this Thursday, two years, two days from now, are not very helpful unless the affected parties know about them. Second, public notification would be consistent with other city notification processes. If a proposal for an apartment building downtown or a subdivision of land for housing lots is required to include notification of nearby property owners, posting of big yellow signs, holding of neighborhood meetings, et cetera, then certainly, a significant proposed change for 13,000 houses ought to include notice. Third, public notification would make the city look good rather than looking sneaky. Fourth, it would treat all property owners equally. Notifications via social media have already begun, as you probably know. These will increase in the weeks ahead and cover much of the city, but they will miss some property owners. A city mailer would be far better. Fifth, the city can afford this expense. This was demonstrated when the mailer about the Iman Transportation Initiative was sent out. Please take action right away to notify all affected property owners. It's already too late for the first two public meetings this week and next, but not too late for the remainder of the public process. And by the way, you might want to check the record of the most recent planning commission meeting where about a dozen people testified about this public notice issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle, it starts with an A?
Andrews.
Thank you, followed by Devin River.
All right, good evening, Mayor Selby and council members. I'm back. I spoke a few weeks ago regarding the support for the Pets, Humane Pet Store Ordinance. So, as you've heard, there was a few representatives from the pet store, as long, as well as my friend Cindy. So I just want to kindly remind everyone that there's documented proof showing where Puppy Land obtains their puppies from, and it would only make sense that Puppy World will be using the same supplier as it is the same owners. Puppy Land has sold over 1,300 puppies from Jack's Puppies, Inc. out of Britt, Iowa. Jack's pulls hundreds of puppies from Midwest Puppy Mills, places them in warehouses, then distributes them to pet stores across the country. This all takes place before the puppies are eight weeks old, and by the time they hit the pet store, that's their third home. Pet stores such as Puppy Land and Puppy World often prey on unsuspecting customers. The City of Olympia is home to many young college students who will be targeted, perhaps, and, and they'll be provided with an option to do financing. And these are very deceiving schemes, and they often, after, they, they offer financing advertised as low as $100 a month, when in reality, when in reality, the interest rate of the payment plan is often 75 to 130%. Puppies are sold without an application process, spay-neuter contract, or rehoming procedures in case the impulse goes wrong. This is not only harmful to the customers, but also for the animals who ultimately suffer the most. And in my, what I think of are the parents of those puppies. Those puppies might be very healthy, and they might look great, but darn it all, you know, those, those parents of those poor puppies are locked up in little cages their whole life, just made to make money for these companies, and I'm irate. I mean, I, I am so frustrated. This has come to Olympia, my hometown. So, thank you very much, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. One last speaker, and that's Devin River.
Good evening, council members. I was here a couple of weeks ago speaking on behalf of the citizens concerned regarding Green Cove development that's being proposed. I remember that last time, at the end of all the public comments, response from council went something like, "Well, it's up to the hearings examiner. We kind of don't really have anything that we can do, we just need to wait and see." Well, talking with Esther and Jerry, that's Esther Cronenberg and Jerry Durker, they did point out that the hearings examiner, the choice of that hearings examiner is up to you, and that this particular hearings examiner is not qualified to, is not qualified to determine whether this petition is, is, abides by, abides by federal law. In a letter that they sent recently, they said, "We believe that hearings examiner Mark C. Schreibmeyer is not qualified to hear this project because he lacks expertise, has several conflicts of interest, and because he has demonstrated bias in similar previous The details of those, those points are in the letter that they emailed to you, and I urge you to read that over and take it to heart. While I'm up here, for those who don't know much about this project, I do want to read a little bit about, from this article that they recently published in, in Works in Progress. The Sundberg Gravel Mine at 2200 Cooper Point Road Northwest is located in an area designated by the City of Olympia and Thurston County is environmentally sensitive. For decades, it has been used as a place to dump hazardous and solid waste for log, and for log storage. Runoff crosses Cooper Point Road to enter a tributary and wetlands that are the Green Cove Basin, the highest priority watershed in WRA reports. Ravines from the site head north draining water across 28th Avenue Northwest directly into Butler Cove and Budlandlet, about a mile away. The site is the, is in the extended capture zone of the city's Allison Springs aquifer and within a mile of more than 60 private wells. Mahan refuses the requirement that he sample groundwater, claiming that the city aquifer is protected by impervious layers. This is disproved by a DNR reports showing the presence from illegal mining of two perched aquifers that could allow surface water to penetrate to the groundwater aquifer below, along with water bubbling up to the surface from a high-pressure aquifer. There's just so much at stake here. This will affect not only orca habitat and salmon habitat, it will poison those streams, it will poison people's wells if it goes through. I'm asking you, I'm urging you to use whatever power you do have in this situation. If it involves recusing the hearings examiner and choosing somebody who knows what they're doing, then I urge you to do that.
Thank you. That concludes our public comment period for the evening. Any comments from the dais or questions for staff? Mayor Protem Bateman.
I would just like to take a moment to thank Callie Wilson for coming out tonight, not only to speak on behalf and in support of our Immigrant and Refugee Advocacy Day, but also being pro-housing and talking about the impact of dense housing and how that would impact your life and your community. Last year, when I was out talking with voters, I heard numerous stories of folks that talked about family members aging in place, having the ability to have someone living close by, and also providing additional income in these times of uncertainty. So I appreciate you coming tonight and sharing that with us. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, well, we'll go right to council reports. I will start with my brief mayor's report. I was pleased to be able to attend the Association of Washington City's City Action Days, which was last week, where it's kind of a, a time for representatives from cities across the state to gather in Olympia and learn about what legislation's going on up at the Hill and learning how to advocate for those policies and advocate for cities, basically. And so, as well, attended a parliamentary training with Councilmember Madron and grabbed some goodies for everybody. I thought this was really good. There's Suggestions for Successful Public Service: 53 Ideas on How You Can Govern Better. We've got all 53 of them going on, I'm pretty sure, but here's just a little reminder. So there you go there. There's some good little pro tips in there. I got you some decks of cards, because you know, sometimes you have time to play. And then a State of the Cities 2020 report. So, I figured I'd hand these out to everybody, because you don't have enough to read. And then as well, last night, I, it was my pleasure to attend on behalf of the city, the retirement of Lieutenant General Gary Valesky up on the JBLM campus. He's been there for three years. I've gotten a chance to meet him and his wife numerous times over my service as mayor. I was, it was sad to see him go, but I've learned a lot from, from his leadership, and I'm also very pleased to introduce, at some point, I'll have Tom Jamison, a retired lieutenant colonel from JBLM, who is somebody I've selected as our, as my liaison to JBLM when I can't attend some of the events up there. And so, he and his wife Tracy attended with me, and they fit right in, and he explained everything and all the acronyms on the, on the drive home. So it was really helpful for me to have somebody that can be that liaison to a very important part of our, our regional community. So that's all I got. Any questions? All right, I'll go to my right, Councilmember Madron. Anything to report?
I haven't yet had an opportunity to attend any of my committees yet, so I have nothing to report.
There will be time.
I, I did participate in the doorway count that, of people who were sleeping outside the morning, that the point-in-time census was taking place. So, that's just going around downtown and counting the people who are sleeping outside, and I think the total count for that day was 119. And I know there's some staff changes going on with who's been managing that program, and I just want to, you know, let city staff know that I think it's really important that that kind of data collection continues, because it was, it was really informative for me personally, but understanding trends around the population downtown, I think, is really important.
Any questions for Councilmember Madron? I just want to clarify, that was just downtown. Okay, thanks for doing that. Councilmember Rollins?
Yes, just an item to report. On January 22nd, the General Government Committee met, and you all just approved our work plan tonight, so thank you. And we, in a, just to highlight, in addition to kind of the regular updates we get related to the CDBG process, OPD updates, PBIA and Downtown Ambassador, we're also going to be continuing looking at tenant protections in the city, as well as scoping the police auditor position, as well as the Humane Pet Sales Ordinance, assuming that, that the, the referral goes through from Lisa, from Councilmember Partially. And this coming month begins kind of some of the busiest time on general government, where we're going to be interviewing all of the, the applicants who we're, we're, we're going to be hearing from, from our boards and commissions. So, that's pretty exciting, and that starts very soon.
Thank you for that report. Any questions for Councilmember Rollins? Yes, I remember on my four years total of service on general government, you guys are heading into crazy busy time with all the advisory committee interviews, so thank you for, for your service on that committee. All right, right here, General Government, right over here. All right, Mayor Protem Bateman.
Thank you, Mayor Selby. I have nothing to report.
All right. Councilmember Partially.
I have several things to report. First, both Councilmember Cooper and myself attended the Thurston County Climate Mitigation Steering Committee meeting, some of the last that we will be doing. At this meeting, we, we're actually helping them try to build the rubics that would narrow down over 200 different action items that the work groups have come up with. Obviously, we cannot work with 200 immediately, so the priorities have in general been if we can actually have a good greenhouse gas reduction, the ability to do this, which is the control, the co-benefits, which are, you know, the equity and so forth, and the ability to have big impact. We had quite a robust discussion on how this priority would look. They're actually going to go back and put together, I think it was five different models, and look for the Venn diagram and how they overlap, and try to hopefully bring us the top 30 to 50 action items. We also discussed during this time, the, how do we make this list of goals be able to rotate through and be a living plan? Because all of these 200s are worthy, 200 or plus are worthy actions that we should be doing for our climate mitigation, and that will be further discussed. We also looked at the schedule. We hope to have a draft plan potentially by the end of March to April, and this draft plan will be coming out to the jurisdictions probably late spring or midsummer. We lastly had updates from our jurisdictions, and once again, Olympia City staff made us very proud with all the efforts and their green team that they have put forward. And lastly, we introduced the idea, two ideas, one from Councilmember Cooper, that the Steering Committee may need to stay in place to provide implementation, governance, and discussion about finances the plan goes forward. And lastly, we introduced the idea that potentially, one of the ways to kick off this plan and consideration of this plan is having a regional declaration of a climate emergency. So, we will see where that goes at the next meeting, which is at the end of February. Then we'll be taking a break for public comment, and hopefully during this period of time, the draft plan will start to be implemented, brought out to the Steering Committee and then out to the jurisdictions, starting in April/May. Second item is, for those of you who are not aware, there's a charity called Pause Against Cancer who has teamed up with the Fire Department of Olympia, the Fire Union in particular. In this calendar, which you can find at Pause Against Cancer or Anchor Photography, or the Olympia Veterinary Cancer Center, is a 14-month calendar. It is meant to kind of highlight both the increasing risks of cancer in all species. As a matter of fact, the CDC predicts that by 2030, we will have a 75% higher rate of cancer in humans as compared to 2010. We now know that for all domesticated species, cancer is the number one cause of death. We also understand that every day that a fireman runs into a fire or deals with some first responders' task, they take risks, and not all of them are from the flames that burn. Cancer is a very serious risk for every firefighter. As a matter of fact, we have one firefighter that is battling stage four lung cancer, a cancer that was probably created by his job. So we wanted to honor these two types of heroes, the heroes of the animals that make our life richer, and the heroes of our first responders in this calendar. Anyone who's here after the meeting can come see it, but it's phenomenal. These firefighters are amazing, and I personally love the animals. The last thing I'd like to do is put forward a referral for the, the city council to consider adopting an ordinance regulating the retail sales of dogs and cats, and enacting a new chapter to the municipal court in incorporation with this regulation. I would also like the city council to consider sending this to legal with this draft ordinance to come back to council for direct consideration. All of you have a copy of this, and it has been signed with, by Mayor Protem Bateman and Councilmember Rollins.
All right, and this is going to go to general government?
We are going to send it to legal because we already potentially have the beginnings of a draft ordinance, and then bring it back to council based on agenda for consideration.
Okay. We're all good? All right. Any questions for Councilmember Partially? Thank you for your work on that. The calendar is very cute. All right, Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Selby. I have nothing to report.
All right. Oh, yes, Councilmember Gilman.
I have nothing to report this week.
Did I skip you?
Yes. I know. So I just didn't want to leave people in suspense for a whole week. I'll have a robust report next week. How about that?
I read your mind. Like I have nothing to report across your forehead. Sorry about that. I've never done that. Our interim city manager, Jay Burney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have nothing to report.
Excellent. All right, so we will be back next Tuesday with another regularly scheduled business meeting, with no further business, though we're adjourned.